Color guard. Halt. Right. Face. Post the colors. Left. Face. Forward. March. Color guard. Halt. Out and out. Face. Thank you. Good job.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask that we go out of order just for a moment, and I could do my board report, if you're comfortable with that. Okay. So, we asked you to stay. Normally, the color guard will leave right after they present the colors, but we wanted to take just a minute to kind of congratulate, not kind of, to congratulate you guys. The marksmanship team won the conference championship, and so they have qualified to go to states in April. No, in January, forgive me. And so we have two of those team members here. We have cadet Summer Wyatt, and we have cadet Cole Cook, who are both a part of that team, and just really, really excited for you guys. Good work, good work. And then if you remember last month at all, that we reported that we, upcoming was their, was their annual inspection. And the overall organization earned an outstanding grade for all that they're doing, which is the highest that they could get. So, administration of the program was above average, academic program above average, reports and records, cadet performance, student mentoring, all of that above average, and school system program support. So congratulations, Ms. Bennett, to you and your team for outstanding support of this program. And so just very proud of all of the work that you guys are doing, Chief McClure and your team that are leading these fantastic students to such a great report. So congratulations to you guys. And then some? I did get a copy of the report, so, yes. Did you want to say anything about that? Okay, all right. And then, this is just kind of fun, but 25 of the cadets visited the Citadel and spent four days at the Paris Island Marine Corps Boot Camp, and, which is really exciting. And I only, my husband had an opportunity to do this last year, and he came home and he was just like, "That is intense." But it was incredible. And so, the fact that you guys had that opportunity. Did any of you go? Okay, a couple of you. Could I take just a moment? I'm putting you on the spot, so you can say no, but would any of you like to take just a moment and tell us a little bit about your experience?
At the end of the first day, several of the cadets went through the wire.
They wanted to go home. It was very stressful. When we got there, there was a lot of yelling, but we finally got settled and everything, went to bed, ate, went to bed, and it was mid for night, but then the next morning, it was just all over again, yelling, crying, stuff. But overall, it was really fun.
Awesome, thank you. Did they put you at the phones and ask you to call your family and then sit and scream at you the whole time? My husband had sent me a video clip of this, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh." And he said, "This is what they did to me." And so where they were, they, you know, "Call your family," and then just intense screaming and yelling and all that kind of stuff. "Call your family, I said," you know, kind of thing. And you're like, "Hi, Mom," and there's all this screaming. And so, that's crazy. But I, congratulations for making it through and getting probably the best taste that you can of what it would be like if you were to continue to move forward. So, good work on that. Congratulations for sticking it through. So, that's all I have for our board report, but just wanted to say thank you so much to you guys and congratulations on your marksmanship win for your outstanding report with your inspections, and just very proud of the work that you guys continue to do. Thank you, Chief McClure.
May I say something? We have Captain Lawson himself. We thoroughly enjoy and appreciate the support of the school board, the public, the school board, the parents that are always so supportive. It makes a big difference from there. It makes a difference in impact on lives of the cadets. We appreciate every minute of yours.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And you guys are officially dismissed, and thank you for letting me go out of order here, so.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Show them.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ms. Muma, and a second by Mr. Suddles to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, simply by raising your right hand, which is unanimous, nine vote. And at this time, Mr. Oliver, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. As interim superintendent of McDowell County Schools and secretary to the McDowell County Board of Education, it is my official duty to preside over the reorganizational meeting of the board. The chairman of the McDowell County Board of Education is elected at the regular December meeting of the board, held on the first Monday of December, and serves until December of the following year. At this time, I will receive nominations for the chairman of the McDowell County Board of Education.
Sir, at this time, I'd like to nominate Mr. Terry English for chair.
I will second that.
Do we have any other nominations? Very well. I need a motion and a second for the person nominated for the chairmanship. And then a vote.
I second that.
All in favor, please vote yes by raising your right hand. It's unanimous.
Yes, sir.
So at this time, I would like to thank Mr. Frank for his years of service as the board chair, and also want to thank and congratulate Mr. English as the newly-elected board chair. Sir, at this time, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Well, thanks, everyone. I really do mean it from the bottom of my heart. We'll continue on then with the meeting. We need to elect a vice chair, and at this time, the floor is open for nominations for a vice chair.
I would like to nominate Ms. Amy Muma as the vice chair.
And I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? If there are none, then is there a motion and a second to elect Amy Muma as the vice chair?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Suddles?
And I'll second it.
And Ms. Silver, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, then all in favor, right hand. And the motion passes unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Muma. Okay, is everyone settled? All right, item five on the agenda this evening is board appointments. And the superintendent serves as secretary to the board. And Ms. Becky Smith is the administrative assistant to the board. And so is, excuse me, is there a motion and a second to approve those appointments this evening?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Suddles and a second by Ms. Muma to appoint Mr. Oliver as the secretary to the board, and Ms. Smith as the assistant to the board. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, right hand. And the motion carries unanimously. This time, we do this each year at our annual meeting. And I'm going to ask our interim superintendent, Mr. Oliver, if he will lead us through our reaffirmation of the code of ethics that school board members abide by.
Yes, sir. Sir, thank you. Congratulations again. In your folders, please find the following board policies. Board policy 2120, which is the code of ethics for school board members as required by General Statute 160A-86 and General Statute 115C-47. And board policy 2121, which is board member conflict of interest as required by General Statute 14-234. These copies are few to keep and review. There is a form in your folder to sign showing that you've received these two policies. And as you know, all board policies are posted on the McDowell County Schools website under the Board of Education tab. So if you take a moment and sign those for Ms. Becky, that'll be helpful. So at this time, I'm going to review the code of ethics for school board members. This is published by the North Carolina School Board Association, and it's just a reminder for everyone involved of the solemnity and the sincerity of the role that has been undertaken by our board members. As a member of my local board of education, I will strive to improve public education. And to that end, I will attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at those meetings. Recognize that I should endeavor to make policy decisions only after full discussion at publicly-held board meetings. Render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment, and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups. Encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members and seek systematic communications between the board and students, staff, and all elements of the community. Work with other board members to establish effective board policies and to delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent. Communicate to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs. Inform myself about current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs, providing needed information, such as those sponsored by my state and national school board associations. Support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as school staff and insist on a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff. Avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain. Take no private action that will compromise the board administration and respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law. And, last, remember always that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the McDowell County Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving along then, item number seven is administrative reports. And, Mr. Secretary, would you care to deliver those?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who's attending tonight. We appreciate your time and interest in our schools, and I look forward to the, I know everyone's looking forward to one of the last bullets on this report, sure. But we'll start out with the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference. And I'd like to remind everyone that at the conference, the highlight for us was that Mr. English was sworn in as a board member of the North Carolina School Boards Association. So we were honored with your selection, sir.
Thank you.
The Teacher Advisory Council meeting had the first one for this year, and that was really awesome. If you don't know, the superintendent and teacher advisory council is made up of all of the different teachers of the year from each school. And so Ms. Phillips is the senior teacher of the year as our district teacher of the year. Then we had Thanksgiving break, and everybody really enjoyed that time to rest and relax with family. The following week, we had the parent advisory committee meeting, and the parent advisory committee members are selected by their school improvement team at each school, and they represent their school at each of those meetings in a very valuable role as well. Last week, I was able to attend the North Carolina School Superintendents Association Winter Leadership Conference in Greensboro. And that was Thursday and Friday. And the last part of the meeting on Friday was the quarterly state superintendent's meeting with State Superintendent Truitt and her staff. They joined us for about three hours for the last part of the conference, and very informative, worthwhile time. Later this week, I'll be meeting with the emergency services leadership at Old Ford Elementary, and the purpose of that meeting is to reestablish our connectivity for Old Ford as a temporary and emergency shelter site. It was designated as such prior to the construction. And while the, after the construction began, there were two churches in Old Ford that were designated for that purpose. And we've agreed to, again, be the emergency shelter. And just so you know, emergency shelter is for no more than 24 hours. So, I think it's safe to say that if, if the Department of Public Safety has to shut down I-40 on the Old Ford Mountain, we're not going to be in school for those 24 hours, so we should be good. That's, that's, that's the definition of our support in that regard, is not more than 24 hours. We'll be meeting to make sure we're all in agreement on that process. And next week, I'll be attending the new board member orientation with our three newly-elected board members. Looking forward to that. I think it's actually called core training for our new board members. And I know that'll be a great experience. And on the 16th of December, will be the last day for students before we begin our Christmas and holiday break. And I know that'll be of interest to everyone. I think we may be talking about the 16th shortly. That's my report.
All right. Just one quick question, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, sir.
What day does school resume after the Christmas break?
Um, the second. Monday, the second, January 2nd.
Yes, sir. Just for the public's information. You heard Mr. Oliver mention Ms. Phillips, our most senior teacher. And usually, each month, the teacher of the year is an ex officio member of the Board of Education. And they usually bring us news and happenings and events and what's going on out in our schools. We always look forward to their reports. So, Ms. Phillips, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. English, and members of the board, and all the new faces. Hello. I'm Kelly Phillips. I have taught, this is, I think, my 18th year, 14 years at Marin Elementary, my fourth year at Pleasant Gardens. For any of you that don't know me, kindergarten is my passion. I've taught everything K-6, but those little ones are my absolute ideal place to be. As you know, it is the month of December, so anyone who has had the opportunity to be in the classrooms or in the schools, you know there's lots of fun things happening. There are elves in classrooms. There's lots of Christmas decorations going on. I know the middle school and high school, they get in on the fun too with all the dress-up days, so December is the absolute most fun time. So if you get a chance, drop into some classrooms between now and December 16th, and you're going to have lots and lots of fun. So with that being said, we know, anyone who is an educator, they have the utmost true desire to serve the students. I know we have lots and lots, I don't even know how many teachers we have in our county, but we have a lot. And I promise that every single one of them has the best interest of each child that comes to their classroom. And we know that educating a child is much more than just the academics. It's much more than just the sports, but we have to educate the whole child. And so educating the whole child, it involves so much more than just teaching reading, writing, math, the arts, and the technical fields. Before we can even begin to teach the academic standards, it is important that we realize our students come to us with needs that extend beyond the classroom. Many of these needs are ones that we cannot see. Some come to us with trauma. We'll get a little emotional on this because we have lots of kids who go through things that we have never even imagined. So, we can't just start teaching them from day one. We want to, but we have to meet those needs first. We have some that just need guidance on the daily stresses that happen every day in their lives, whether they're five years old and they need help getting out of the car in the mornings, or if they're a senior in high school trying to figure out how to graduate, what they need to do next. We have to meet those needs that are beyond just the academic needs. So, something in our county that has been a goal for at least, well, as long as I've been teaching, but it's really been heavy on our minds for the last, is the social-emotional learning of our students. And so in order to meet those needs, in order to make sure that every child is getting what they need, we now have a program called Character Strong. So I know all the principals know about it. It is something that we can use from kindergarten, preschool even, all the way up through graduating. So, I want you to go to that next slide. The Character Strong program, it's not one that, the beauty of it, for all of us who are teachers and we're planning all the subject times really hard, everything is at our fingertips. So meeting the needs of these learners who come to us, who might just need help knowing what courage and respect and responsibility are, it gives us lessons. This, we have a wonderful counselor. I'm not sure if Ms. Rachel put this together by herself or if it was all the counselors in the county, but it's at our fingertips. All we have to do is we can click on our grade level, we can go in, it gives us videos, it gives us songs, it gives us lessons. And so what we do at Pleasant Gardens is we have our tribe time in the mornings. So the first 10 minutes of our day, before we even dive into academics, we are trying to meet the social-emotional needs of our students. We're trying to ask them how they're feeling. We're teaching them about responsibility. We're teaching them about courage, about respect. It gives us access to stories that go along with this curriculum. There's little songs. But the beauty of this program is that it's not just something that is done in our classrooms. Our guidance counselors are teaching this to students, the specials teachers, the, I'm not sure about the high school, but elective teachers, everyone has access in our district to this program. And so if you have students who have those social-emotional needs, we have things at our fingertips that we can go in and find lessons. For example, my classroom, they may not understand sharing. They're five. But if you go into a fifth-grade classroom, there's probably way different social-emotional needs that are happening. And so it's geared towards that grade level. I would click on it for you, but there's so much, we would get lost in it forever. So just, for example, every day of the month, for October, we talked about respect. All of our stories were about respect, all of our little songs in the morning were about respect. And then you can ask the kids at the end of the month, "What was our character trait of the month?" And they'll be able to tell you that we learned about respect. And the great thing that we've done this year is we've started doing monthly awards. We're doing them quarterly, but each month, we pick two students, or one student, who represents that character trait, and they get recognized, and you get to go to the principal and something fun. And I know Old Ford, Jill's not here today, but Old Ford is doing something special. They were a leader-in-me school, and now they are following the character traits. And a lot of their leader-in-me activities are now moving towards the character traits. So the Character Strong program, it's a curriculum that we take it, we do, we base our lessons around it. You can find literature that goes with it. I have not explored the high school piece. I know it's there. But I've heard from other people that it's something that they can use all the way up. So this program, it's, the beauty of it is, it's not just happening in one place. It's happening throughout the district. So if students are moving, we know we have a lot of transient kids, which also adds to that social-emotional stress. So they are able to hear the same type lessons from school to school. So if you get a chance, go into the classrooms. Ours happens usually about 7:50 to 8 o'clock in the mornings, where you're going to hear some little songs, you're going to see the kids learning about it. But the social-emotional needs, especially since COVID, our kids have come back, and we know that we can't just pick up with academics if we cannot meet the kids where they are. There's that little poem where it says, like, "Parents got out of bed, they yelled at me, and then all my teacher does is ask me, 'Where's my pencil?'" And I think of that, as a teacher, we cannot expect these kids to be where they need to be if we don't truly know and understand them, and understand that they have needs that, yes, we will. I promise you, every teacher in this county is going to try their best to teach them the academic goals, but we have to meet them first and make sure they are ready to learn before they can learn.
Ms. Phillips, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say something real quickly. So my boy ended up having to come home from school early today because he was sick yet again. But when I picked him up and we were at the house, I said, "Well, what were you doing in school today?" And he's like, "Well, we had just gotten done with our Character Strong." And I said, "I love that program." And he's like, "I do too. It's cool." So, yeah.
Nice.
Thanks for sharing with us tonight.
Next item of business is correspondence. And Ms. Smith, is there any? No correspondence. So following that is the usual time for requests to address the board or public comment. Are there any requests to do so? None this evening. Okay. Moving on, next, item 11 is unfinished business. And the first one of those items is the tennis court multipurpose field project that we've been, been trying to get started going. And hardly, you, would you like to begin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I spoke with Mr. Miles Wright of Wright Engineering earlier today, and he is ready to submit for the erosion control approval next week. We'll be hitting that submitted, and he said that if we're fortunate, that will take no more than 30 days. And then once we have that bag, then they should be able to put the project for the tennis courts, not anything beyond the tennis courts right now. I'll forbid.
So there is a plan and a design in place, and we've been trying to meet all the legal requirements before we can proceed forward with any construction.
Yes, sir. And I'd like to thank Mr. Suddles for his input on that, the recent update for that project. Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, it really was good. Okay. So moving along then, I don't know if members of the public will recall, and I'm sure probably our newest members may not be aware, but some months ago, the board decided to engage a firm to help us with an elementary school facilities and capacity study. And that's very close to being wrapped up. Do you have any updated information for us?
Yes, sir, I do. I spoke with Dr. Watson today as well. And we, he had said earlier, it might not be ready until March, but he believes now they'll be ready to present to the board by mid-February. So with the board's approval, I'd like to get that scheduled for the February work session so the whole board could hear the report at one time.
All right. Okay. Any questions from new members, other seasoned members on either of those projects? If not, then item 12 is new business. And first up is a request for approval of the school improvement plans included on the LPS list. Ms. Hamby's going to speak to those. For those of us who can't remember what LPS stands for, could you educate us?
Absolutely, yes, sir. So first, I want to say congratulations to everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present. So, good evening. I do want to share with you about our schools that have received low-performing status. Um, of course, um, we know coming out of the midst of COVID that that's a little bit hard to, to swallow. But we've seen a lot of growth, uh, as we have been moving forward. And, uh, we have nothing but, um, faith and what our schools are going to do this coming year. They're working very hard. So for the board members, uh, previously, our schools that have LPS status presented to the board on October the twenty-fourth during the work session. Uh, each of our schools, which is three elementary schools and one, uh, middle slash high school, which is the virtual academy, had an opportunity to share their school improvement plan. Inside your board packets tonight, you should have received a one sheet summary of their school improvement plans that was shared with you in October. Based upon the pacing of the state and what is required of us, each of our schools that have, uh, been listed as low performing must submit their plans to the state no later than December the ninth, so this Friday. We do not want to present, uh, to submit those plans until we have the approval of the board. So tonight I come to you requesting action on the school improvement plans for our schools that have received LPS status.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for our new members, uh, that have absolutely no clue what's going on in this situation, uh, I, I think it would be beneficial to them to tell them, inform them that we've gone over these plans. Uh, we know they're, they're gonna do a good job with them and, and they can feel confident to support those plans. And, and it is in their packet where they can read over.
Yes. Yes. Uh, uh, I echo Mr. Frank's remarks there to our, our newest members. The board did take an in-depth look at each of the school improvement plans on the, uh, low performing status list. And while I have the floor, uh, I want folks in the community to understand that low performing status does not necessarily mean low performance.
Right.
Uh, I'm, man, our, just like Ms. Phillips said, our, our staff is top notch. They have their head down from the moment they get there till the moment they leave.
Yes, sir.
And I, I feel confident that our, uh, school administrators will do everything they can to help these plans come, come about.
Sir, I'd like to add to that, that just remind everyone that for our three elementary schools that are on the list, all of, all three of these schools met or exceeded student growth last year. So even, even though they're on the list, it's based on the overall score, which is mostly about proficiency. Each of these, each of the three elementary schools met or exceeded student growth. And that really demonstrates the effort being made by the teacher and the students in the classroom. And as long as we're growing, proficiency will come. I just want to remind everyone of that.
And if I may, Chairman English, I have the opportunity to visit in each of these class, in each of these schools and be part of the classroom, have a chance to sit down and talk with the principals about where we are and what's needed next. And, um, I'm telling you, I've never been prouder of a group that's working hard, that's meeting with their teachers, that's working with their kids. And so really hats off to our administrators and teachers. Um, it doesn't feel good when someone gives a status such as this when the hard work has gone in. And so the one thing I can say about our team is that if they, um, once they have that feeling, they just step up to the plate and they give it their all. And that's exactly what I'm seeing as we move around visiting our schools.
I know, excuse me, I'm so sorry. I know that, um, I spent some time up at North Cove with Mr. Wiseman. Um, and I, I too want to just echo what you say, um, and, and the thoughts of other people. Um, I cannot think of a harder working group of people than the people that are working in McDowell County schools right now. As Ms. Phillips shared, um, it's a lot of times way more than, um, the three Rs. It's meeting those children where they are. That's the beauty of public schools is that we take all children, regardless of where they are. Every child is welcome to come and be a part of our public school system. And I want to applaud you guys for that. Um, I would like to make a plea if this goes out, um, and even to the McDowell News, for anybody that has the ability to volunteer, anybody that has the educational experience, you know, I'm talking to retired teacher friends, um, if you could give some of your time, especially to these low performing schools, because they need people. They need people to meet children where they are. And I'm, I'm proud of the fact that the board has taken, you know, we've, we've tried to hire some people, um, but those, those needs are huge. So if anybody, uh, wants to find a way to get involved, please, please, please bring your expertise back to McDowell County schools and help. Because we, we need to, we all need to, as a community, join together to try to, to help all of our schools, but especially these people that have, have gotten a label that I'm not so sure they deserve from the state.
All right. Well, Ms. Silver, while you have the, the floor, would you care to offer a motion for approval?
I would love to offer a motion for approval of these school improvement plans from the four schools, uh, with low performance status.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Sells? Thank you, sir. I'm sure you feel like the rest of us did. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the school improvement plans for those, uh, schools included on the low, low performing status list. So is there any further discussion? If not, then all in favor of the motion to approve, right hand, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman English. And for any of our new board members, if you have any questions about any of our schools, please know that I'm here and I'll be glad to answer those for you. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby.
Okay. Next up, uh, Mr. Spivey is going to, uh, present the request for approval of some new high school course offerings.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Chairman English, members of the board, Superintendent Oliver. I come tonight requesting that the board adopt, uh, two new courses for McDowell High School. The first would be, uh, we ask that it be voted on so that it can be put into place at the second semester mark, so mid-January. That course is a forensics course, and originally Ms. Finley brought it to you last spring, and it was approved, but as a CTE course. And so at the state, uh, CTE summer conference, uh, they pulled it from their course offerings. Um, I talked to Ms. Finley about that. She's not a hundred percent sure why it was pulled, but, um, it was pulled for two years. So we are asking that it be, uh, adopted by the McDowell County School Board as a local course code, uh, and that we would have that in place for the spring semester. The second course that we're looking to add is simply to, uh, gauge student interest in a course called Marine Biology. And included in your packet should be a brief description of both of these courses. Uh, if you have questions, I can answer. But, um, our goal is to be able to meet the students and offer what their interests are. And so both of these courses are, we're looking to add one for the spring and one for next school year.
I do have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Spivey, can you tell us what the difference is or explain the difference between like a DPI-approved curriculum versus a local course offering and the significance of that?
So courses typically fall into three categories. There are state-adoption courses, then there are career and tech education courses, and then there are local course codes. And so the courses are taught the same. And so if a course has been taught in McDowell County, let's say at McDowell High School, then Early College or MAI can teach that same course because we have a course code. And so the state adopts certain courses. Now, I cannot explain to you why the CTE chose to withdraw the forensics course from their offering. Um, we have the curriculum that was approved, okay? Uh, and that's the same curriculum that we are gonna teach in the spring. There's a vendor that provides that. Um, and so it's the, it's exactly the same that would have been. Now, last spring, when CTE said they were going to give this course to us, uh, we put it in our course catalog. We had a lot of students sign up for it, and Ms. Bennett went and hired a teacher to teach forensics because we had a full slate of kids that wanted to take it. Uh, she is a former police officer who worked on that side of forensics. Um, do you know if she was a, like a crime scene analyst? And so when the course was pulled over the summer, we changed the name of her courses to public safety to make, you know, we had already hired her. And, uh, she taught public safety for us, but now we would like to get her in her, in her main area, which is forensics. And so again, it's the same course code, it's the same course that would have been offered. We just want it to be offered locally because it's not approved at the state level.
And I understand that the forensics piece has been taught over at, uh, FCS, some of it anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right? So this is an opportunity for those students to continue in on that.
Yes. And my, this is, we're asking for the survey course. That my understanding is that the same company that offers the course that we're gonna offer, there's a second level as well, but we're not asking for that yet. We'd like to see how it goes.
And the marine biology's for the fall?
Yeah. We're gonna put it in the course. So every spring, so at, uh, at the high school, kids have choices. So they get, you know, four in the fall, four in the spring. They can take eight courses. And so depending on your age level, some are required, English, math, science, social studies, and then they get electives. And so a lot of our electives at McDowell High School are CTE electives. We have one of the largest and best CTE departments in the state of North Carolina. And so they, these courses are responding to what students' wants are. So we put a lot of courses in the course catalog. Kids take it home. They talk to their parents. They say, man, I'd really like to take marine biology. I've never heard of it. And so they sign up for it. If enough students sign up, the course makes. Sometimes we offer a course that doesn't make. If we have a course that say five kids, eight kids, if they sign up for it, not, not all the time can we allow a course to make with that few kids. Uh, in marine biology, what we're asking is that it go into the course catalog for next school year. So it will be in the catalog starting in January. Late February would be when the students decide what courses they want for next year, and then they sign up. They get with their counselor, their grade level administrator. We put everything in the computer. And then over the late spring, early summer, we build next year's schedule. And so we, we need to know early what the, what the kids want to take. So it will be an elective to be offered next fall if enough students sign up for the course. And they may not, but we would like to offer it in the hopes that kids may want to take the course.
When you give out this information, do you give out flyers or anything about the courses? I like that one.
So our counselors go into every classroom and present the course catalog. They talk to the students, they answer all the questions. It, we even get to the point where everybody in the class has their name at the top of the page, and it says, I'm in tenth grade, and it'll say, okay, you have to sign up for an English. Do I want to take honors English or standard English? Everybody picking English, the counselor's there, the teacher's there, and then, okay, they pick one. So then, once we go through the required courses, at that point, students are asking questions about electives. There's typically a period where they get to go home and talk to their parents. You don't have to decide on spot. We're not making anybody do that. Um, but then after a couple of weeks, is it usually a couple of weeks, Ms. Bennett? Where they get to mull this over with their family, then the cards come back. Counselor reviews it, and that's when we start building the skip.
Reason I'm asking, Coastal Carolina gives a free full tuition to marine biology students if you're accepted there. So it'd be nice to have that printed out and say, look, especially for the low-income families that need that. Coastal Carolina, Palm Beach Atlantic, and College of Charleston. Don't ask me how I know that. But, uh, those three schools give full, full rides.
Thanks, sir. We can pass that along to the counselors to make sure that that's included in information given out.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, any other information needed? If not, then is there a motion to approve the, uh, new course offerings at McDowell High School?
I'm sorry, I do have one last question.
Okay. That's allowable?
Thank you. I apologize. Mr. Spivey, um, is it every December that you bring the, the recommended new course offerings to the board?
No, ma'am, not always. Sometimes it's earlier, sometimes it's later. It just depends on circumstances.
And we don't always have new courses.
We don't always have new courses. Um, and if courses are offered by the state, we don't technically, we don't always bring them to the board. Local course, local course codes need board approval.
Local course codes?
Yes, ma'am. So since this was not approved by the state last summer, like they said they would, we're asking for the local course code.
Okay. It seems to me that this was something that should have gone to a committee before then being, being brought to the full board. But if we know that in December is typically when you're doing that, then maybe next year we can make sure that gets scheduled appropriately.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? If not, then all in.
Did you need a motion?
We did.
No, you didn't get a motion.
Would someone care to make a?
I'll make a motion. One second.
Momo and Pupo, y'all trying to trap me?
Tried, tried.
So we have a motion and a second. Now, is there any further discussion? If not, then all in favor, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spivey.
All right. Now, another item of new business is school calendar consideration. And, uh, Mr. Oliver, I think you maybe Ms. Silver wanted to address that.
Um, I know that, uh, there's, there's some interest in normally the last day of school before Christmas break is an early release day. On this year's calendar, it's not listed as an early release day. And the reason for that, from last year's calendar committee, was this year has two less instructional days than last year had. So the committee decided to not list that day and also the last day of school, which I believe is June. On this year's calendar, those are not designated at this time as early release days. But the board could certainly decide to do that if, if you choose to do so.
So they heard something from the, from the gallery. It's like, please. So, um, so I got a motion for you. I'd like to make a motion that, um, we make an adjustment to the, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three calendar and mark Friday, December sixteenth as an early dismissal date with the stipulation that we do not have any, um, bad weather days between now and then. Um, so that's the motion I'm making. I'm sticking to that.
Would you like to clarify as to whether that's staff?
This is for everyone, staff and students.
Just want to be clear.
Ms. Silver, is it just that, that date, or are you doing the last?
At this date, I think we should only look at the December date.
So is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second time.
So we have a motion and a second to dismiss, make December sixteenth an early dismissal.
I love it.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Anyone else need to know a little more about it? Ms. Phillips has got a big grin on her face. Just like Christmas is.
You don't have to wear your pajamas off.
All right. So with no other, uh, discussion, all those in favor of the motion, right hand, and all those opposed, there is none, and it carries unanimously. And now we come down to board reports. And this is usually a time when board members that serve on various committees give, uh, reports from the activity of those committees, and so do we have it. Uh, Ms. Pupo, you recall at the beginning of our meeting, offered her, she is our NJ, currently our NJ ROTC representative, and she offered that update and report. Are there others? Head start?
I'll just do a real brief one for Head Start and Les Smith Silver. You want to. We have not had a meeting, but we were notified. Um, we received our forty-five day letter. Um, uh, when did we get that? Back at the very end of November. And, uh, we will be reviewed the week of January ninth. Um, I am pretty sure, and, and Ms. Silver helped me with this, I'm pretty sure it was gonna be an all-over email. I think it's all, I don't think they're having interviews this year. That's not the year that we have the interviews. I'm, I think it's all correspondence, and they're just gonna ask for, um, evidence of, of our practices and what we're doing. And then we, Ms. Delaney will send it out, not me. Ms. Delaney will send that out and, um, but we have been officially notified of that review, and that will be January ninth.
I also have an update from the I also have an update from the pre-K committee, early learning committee, the same, am I calling it the right name? Yep. They had a, had a meeting. Um just a couple of things to make you aware of. I think the most exciting number for me to hear is before 2020, um 50% of the kids that were eligible to be served, were, were being served, and now we're at 68%. We still have a ways to go on that because universal means universal. One thing that our pre-K department has talked about, and I think it's definitely something that we need to look at as a board, especially again, going back to what Ms. Phillips shared, is the amount of special needs that are coming into our pre-K classrooms. And those pre-K teachers need staff development, professional development, um to know how to deal with that. The, the pandemic brought about a multitude of uh needs that these people need to be trained in, and so that's one thing that we need to look into. Mr. Subtles, you may appreciate this, I, I used your name in um, not in vain, but we uh, we desperately need transportation for our pre-K students. Um as you know, North Carolina school buses are not equipped with seatbelts. To put pre-ski, pre-K kids on a school bus is definitely um a health hazard. However, harnesses to install, to be installed on school buses cost $249 apiece. So this is when I mentioned your name, Mr. Subtles. I said, you know, every time we need something, he's like, well, I've got five tractors out in my building, so if you have a school bus available that you let the pre-K department use. Yeah, that's why I told you, I told you probably have one. But seriously, because the children that need universal pre-K the most are the children whose parents do not have the means to get them to the pre-K sites. And so that's definitely something that we need to work on, but I also believe we need to work with our community partners. We need to talk to our county commissioners, and we need to talk to Gulfport Board of Aldermen, and we need to talk to the people that are invested in our community and say, if we want a better McDowell County, we've gotta work together to get universal pre-K for every child in this county. So that, that is uh, I think the biggest takeaways I had from that meeting, but just always enjoy being a part of this.
Mr. Oliver, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the new activity buses, I believe, are equipped with seatbelts, correct?
Sure, I, I would have to check with Mr. Thomas to be certain of that. And the, the bigger, the real issue here with pre-K students is that um state law does not allow us to, to use our current buses for pre-K students, so the buses that we have that are provided by the state are only provided for students in grades K through 13.
In your barn. But I think if we all put our thoughts together, we've got so many connections in this group, and we can put our minds together and we can come up with a solution um for this.
Uh anyone else?
I, I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Elliott and the, and the um staff at FCS, and I'm speaking for Mr. Subtles and Mr. English and Mr. Frank and Miss Silver, and I, we just absolutely had a fabulous time when um the zombie invasion happened. That was pretty, that was pretty cool. It was um great opportunity to see that school in action and see just those students and their thought process and their uniqueness and their unique approaches to problem solving. And so um we really appreciated the invitation. We had a great day, it was a lot of fun, and, and thank you and thank your staff sincerely. It was, it was a great experience. Thank you. It was great, thanks.
This is a, a building and grounds, I guess you could call it that, but it's more of a uh pat on the back to Mr. Oliver, Ms. Rampy, and the board here, but thanks to Ms. Hamilton over at Marin Elementary, who came up with the idea to have these reading pods uh built that you hang hammocks in in a wagon wheel shape uh for the kids to be able to lay in hammocks and read in the outdoors. So it was a great uh idea uh with donations and stuff for Marin Elementary, we got those done. And that turned into a good idea for every elementary school, and I was, opened up a can of worms, so I am installing those. Uh but I'm saying Mr. Oliver uh has approved uh the materials for that from the board for us. Ms. Rampy has ordered the hammocks, uh so I want to take the time to thank both of you for that. And just to see these smiles on the elementary kids' face, I really want to lay there myself too, but uh we should have them done within the next week. And it'll be a good Christmas present, but thank you, thank you, board. Uh we'll all be there for pictures hopefully, and thank you, Ms. Rampy, for your work in this too. Thank you for driving the tractor.
Uh anyone else? I would just, I just had one item that uh I've, I've been wanting to uh mention. Uh at our last joint education committee meeting, uh the county commissioners had the uh, help me out, Mr. Frank, the lady that's in charge of the animal shelter there, and we talked about a possible joint project to include responsible pet ownership in our, some of our daily schedules, particularly at elementary school level, and uh.
I think she said the target was fourth grade.
I think, I believe that's correct. So uh, you know, there's quite a, according to uh, oh dang, what is her name? Shoot, please forgive me. But according to the director of uh animal control services, there is quite a problem in the county, and they're hoping maybe that over time, some education about the problem and how to deal with it might pay off, and uh might also foster a love of animals among our, our younger students. So I just thought I'd mention that to you. Nothing's been settled. It's just kind of an idea right now.
Mr. English, there is a curriculum that was being used in the schools before COVID, um that was written um by Rachel Kenniger, who had, who's now passed away, but there's already a group that was going into schools and working with mostly, I think it was, was it third grade or fourth grade? Okay, um so I, I was doing that before I became a part of the board, that I can give you the names of those people that did that, because like I said, there's already a curriculum in place. Nope.
That would be good.
Talks about that very thing.
This lady had mentioned that she had some resources available as far as materials and educational supplies and stuff, but uh that would be most helpful, I'm sure. All right. So if there's uh no other board reports, we'll move along to item 13, which is the consent agenda. And uh consent agenda items are basically routine business unless an item is requested to be removed from the consent agenda with a majority vote at the board, and then it would be discussed and voted on for action as a separate item. So is there anyone that would like to offer a motion to have an item removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration?
I just have a que, can I ask questions?
Why, Shu?
Sorry, all my questions tonight. Uh the, the travel ball request for Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays from basically this week or next week until June. This doesn't conflict with anything that we've got going on in the gymnasium uh at the high school? And is this like every Monday, Wednesday, Thursday from now until June? And what does that, does that look like?
Uh ma'am, if the, the, by policy, and this is agreed upon by the quester, any event that the school has that is in conflict with the requested date, the school event supersedes anything that's in that approved request. So the school events always have precedence and priority.
So right now, we're in basketball season, and so my assumption is on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, there's either games or practices. So is this after practices, or what, what does this look like?
Yes, ma'am, it would be after practice. And then if there's, if it's a game night, then they wouldn't have it at all. Miss Bennet, if I say anything wrong?
Okay, and Ms. Bennet, this is something, you're, you're comfortable with this as well? Okay, thank you.
Are we doing this by the structured fee that we have in place, or are we charging them?
Yes, sir, it's within the, within the.
Is that per use, or is that a one-time fee?
Uh it's usually based on hours, sir. I can, I can break that down for you if you want me to, but I don't have the, I don't have the specifics.
Well, since we're talking about, this leads into a deeper discussion. It's perfectly legal for a chairperson to offer a motion, and I would offer a motion that we remove these two facility usage requests to uh discuss and decide on separately. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a majority vote to remove those two items? All in favor? So the motion carries. Here's, here's what's getting me. Like Ms. Pupo, I'm concerned about the length of the commit, of our commitment. Also, the iron sharpens iron request, which is the same dates and made by the same party. That is a business enterprise. That's not volunteer. This person does this for money-making. Right. So I'm wondering if our duty or responsibility as a board of education is to offer our facilities up for a place of business for an enterprise. For example, let's say that Betty Jo likes to bake apple pies, and her kitchen's not big enough anymore, so she makes a request to use our culinary arts grade A inspected kitchen facilities to bake her apple pies in for six months to see if business will go. What, what would be the difference in that and offering our athletic facilities to a money-making enterprise for six months? I, I'm just not convinced that the board's responsibility is to offer a place of business. There are business incubators. And I know that a gym may be harder for folks to find and use this time of year, but there are other gyms out there and available.
We've got some uh proof that came about too, that that same person is training people, charging them, and it's uh kids that are not even from our school, that are in our gym using them, uh that doesn't play for McDowell County schools. That's one thing that concerned me. I'm about helping kids forever, but if our kids can't afford a year to work out with it and other ones can, it seems like it's not fair.
My, my other question and concern, if you read, if you go on our website and you read the application form for a facility usage, you're supposed to have a certificate of insurance for one million dollar coverage for liability. And I, I didn't see any documentation of this request for the last time it was requested by this person of a certificate of insurance. So I don't know if that was offered, if it's on file or, or whatever.
Sir, I do believe they're covered by the umbrella organization, but we can certainly review that. That would be part of the application process.
I'm just telling you, there's something about this just hits me wrong. I would be all in favor of denying the request, but that's just carrying. Y'all talk about it, whatever you prefer to do.
So right now, your request is, and we, we seconded it, and we made a motion to remove it from the consent agenda. Is this something that you'd like us to, our, our superintendent to look into a little bit further? Or do you want to make a motion to, to not accept it? I, I, I'm just a little confused on what you'd like to do next.
I'm, I wouldn't, I would like, I wouldn't offer a motion to deny the request.
To deny the request.
One, based on the length of the request. You know, we just have the Potter's market this last weekend, that's two days a year. I mean, this guy, fellows, asking for six months time.
So my question was gonna be, is that, has there been a precedence, and has there ever been an, a time where we have allowed a business to set up some in some way in, in the school system? And it sounds like yes, based on these, these markets that we've just done, that people are.
Yes, but not for six months.
Okay. So it's, so is, is the issue that it's a business, I just want to clarify, is it that it's a business or it's a business at an unprecedented uh request of how long they're asking for this?
Both to me, because the Potter's market is a, that, that's through the, under the auspices of the Arts and Crafts Association.
But it has been done in the past. Uh I can tell you this, Perfect Game is an organization that rents the baseball uh filled out, but they pay pretty good. And I don't have any fault with someone that's willing to pay us for our facilities to better our facilities and the upkeep, if you're willing. But if you're paying a one-time fee and it's not like all the other organizations or businesses that rent our, rent out our facilities, we're losing money, and that's not fair to our facilities on the upkeep. So I don't know if we remove it as much as I would like for Mr. Oliver to check into, how much are they paying for those days? It, does it fall into the guidelines? Because if I'm not mistaken, we went up about three or four years ago pretty heavily on those fees. Uh and it almost made it to where the baseball park didn't want to pay that, but they did because we had great facilities. And that's a, that's a great uh pat on our back that we're keeping those facilities like that. So if they're paying for them, fine. You know, let them use it, let's build something even better and let people use them, as long as it's for the right purposes and they're paying for them.
With our, with our students' interest is where this question is coming from is, um and, and I don't know a thing about these groups, so naively, I'm asking, is this going to um hurt or put any of our students at a disadvantage that would have liked to have benefited? I, I just can remember my son being in soccer, and we did not have travel soccer here, and so we had to go all the way to Burke County to play travel soccer because that was the only access that my son had to that. And by removing that, is that putting any of our students at a disadvantage would be my question? And I think my other question is kind of along what Mr. English is saying, is that our uh basketball, our, whoever's using those facilities at this time are students. Um what is the length of time that they use that for practice? And if a coach, let's say, says, we need an extra 30 minutes tonight, are they not able to do that because we promised this, this time to another organization? In other words, I, I know what you said, Mr. Oliver, that we take precedent, but you know, if they think they're coming in at six and our coach says, nope, we're practicing for another 45 minutes, how's that gonna go over when that travel team is sitting there at six o'clock going, why aren't you people getting off of the court, kind of thing? So I guess I'm, I'd like a little more details in how that kind of all flushes out. And I've just really, maybe I.
Let me say, and Mr. Subtles, you might be able to add to this or correct me if I'm wrong, but I do know there are other travel teams in the county besides the one that this gentleman.
Yeah, the big thing right here, if you look at those dates, only one of those months is in the summer, the rest of there in the school year. And our coaches probably don't want them playing travel ball because of risk of injury or anything else throughout the school year. So it's really putting our kids at harm's way. They should, they couldn't be playing on the travel ball teams technically anyway. Uh so that one month is the only one that's in the summer where we would be taking that opportunity away from the kids. And if we wanted to just say, hey, look, we'll prove it for the, the month of June, then you could do that, and it wouldn't take away from the kids. But I, I, I know our coaches are allowed to do anything they want to in the summer as far as practice times, what they see for growth for our kids. And it's not charged, it's free of charge. So that's what I would say, hey, our kids are getting taken care of. These travel teams, you, they usually have four or five throughout the county, and a majority of those kids are from other schools or private schools that don't have teams. So for instance, New Manet doesn't have a softball team. So if they play on a travel softball team and rent our facilities, and McDowell does, our girls can't play on that softball team because we have a softball team. So there's only one month over the summer that that. would actually open up doors for our kids to play the rest of the time. Our kids are going to be in school and sports session during that time.
My question is, are we, are we sure that we don't have kids playing on those teams?
You can never be sure unless we check.
Because if you, you know, our basketball team probably has, I don't know, twelve kids, maybe.
The problem you run into...
There's a lot of other kids that, that don't make the team. I was playing devil's advocate there.
The problem you run into a little bit too, is that our coaching staff that are teaching these girls one thing and playing for another coach at the same time, get double coaching. And that's not good for a kid at that point.
Right, and I, I understand that, because, um, my kid played travel everything, I think. But, um, what I'm saying is, if you don't make the high school ball team, but you do want to play basketball, you do want to have that opportunity, I, I don't know, I don't know what, how many kids we're looking at.
The majority of those kids that don't make their high school team are not on these teams, because these coaches play to win, because that's how they make their money. So the kids that don't make the team usually play rec ball somewhere within the county or travel somewhere else on a smaller type team. I don't think Ray Quan, he's a very good player. I don't think he's going to have a team full of, what's the Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, the Misfits? I don't think he's going to have that. I think he's going to put a competition team together that's going to win. And, uh, and I have no problem with that. I, I love Ray Quan, it, but if he's going to use a facility, it should be fair, just like everyone else, because Perfect Game pays, they have to pay. Whoever else uses our facilities, we're going to ask them to pay. I'm sure the pottery people probably paid to use it. The fire association probably paid if we're not donating to the community.
And it's the travel ball team and iron sharpens iron, the same thing.
It's the same coach, I'm not sure how it's set up.
Okay, I don't know.
More information for sure.
I think you're right, I think I would like more information.
Well, is there a motion to table until next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Alright. Motion by Silver and a second by Ms. Mumaw to table until the January meeting. Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling the motion for action? And the motion carries. Alright, we'll move along then with the remainder of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Settles, Ms. Mumaw, is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor? Alright. Okay, at this time, uh, the board would entertain a motion moved into closed session for those reasons listed in our board agenda this evening. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we...
Ms. Pupo makes the motion.
Second.
A second by Ms. Mumaw. Now, you, but, you board members can make motions and seconds at your first meeting. All those in favor? Board will move into closed session.
We're moving, that's a plan.
That's right.
Okay, are we good? Should we go? Should we go?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good.
Hey, how are you, sir?
Good, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you very much.
I said, "Stop!"
Oh, okay, yeah. It's great to see you. Thanks for coming out.
So you take.